September 11th, Day of Infinity. We got the discussion item is the Traffic System Plan and the update. We're all looking to John Lewis, I think.
Sorry.
We'll just stare.
It's David Paul. He had the traffic.
Yep, I asked him a question, that's all me.
Well, Mayor and Commissioners and Land Commission, thank you very much for taking this time out of this beautiful evening to hear this update. We've been in this Transportation System Plan update for several months now, and we've worked our way through several memorandums, and we're getting down to a point where it's time to take community input that we've heard to date, and some of the funding analysis that we've learned to date, and try and narrow that down to a manageable list of projects. And we've hired DCS and Associates to help as our consultants on that project. I can't remember if we presented this group before.
Separately, not together.
So we've had several meetings with the community, and again, it's, we're starting to see the results of those meetings and the results of the analysis, and Carl's going to present that to you.
Can I ask quickly, how good has the turnout been on the community involvement?
Well, from what I saw, it compares well, but it's not huge numbers, but there was, on the open houses that we had, there was good showing. Most of the food was gone by the time we were done. And it wasn't all the consultants today. I don't have specific numbers, but I thought the outcome was good, and it was a diverse set of people in the audience that I hadn't, or people attending that I hadn't normally seen in meetings before.
Okay.
So, and the meetings are one area, there's also been quite an electronic form of communication through the Transportation System Plan website, so that's been probably, I don't know if it's, it's been surprising to me, I don't know if it's been surprising to Carl, but it's been, I think we've seen a lot of input through that mechanism as well.
Good.
So take it away, Carl.
The thing I would add to your question Commissioner is, I think the numbers are around 30 or so per event, but online comments, I think we've got around 200. But that includes those that were submitted in writing at the public events, and then one of the staff posted them up on the website, so.
Okay.
In total, that's a pretty good response, I would say.
So we can go to the website and read these?
You certainly can, and you can add your own if you care to. So, just so I understand, what's, I don't think I asked this question, probably should have asked this question before now, but how long have you, how much time have you set aside for this discussion tonight?
Half an hour.
Yeah, not long, we have a couple of separate sessions.
Half an hour, okay, very good.
Half an hour.
Let me go. All right, so these are the topics, the first two are just kind of introducing the projects where they stand, and the discussion for tonight is focused around long lists and detailed maps about the different varieties of projects that are identified in the plan to date. You should know that about 70% of those projects are in your current TSP, and they were carried forward, and there's quite a bit of refinements and new details that we've added this go around, but a lot of it you should be very familiar with, so, and it shouldn't be complete surprises there. So I'll roll through these, you know TSP has lots of pieces to it, it's not just about cars and trucks, especially this time around, more than ever, a much greater focus on biking and walking and get around, around the community that way. We are down to the bottom left corner there, gone through how it works today, what the growth is going to look like, and now we're down to selecting solutions, and we have, as you'll see, if you've taken a look at Tech Memo 11, which is the topic for tonight, there's basically two categories of solutions. There's the financially constrained plan, which is what, our best estimate of what can be funded through current sources, and there's what's just simply called the plan system, which is everything. So those are the two pieces. Once we get through this, we'll make some refinements to the list, depending on which is above or below the financing plan line, and then get down to ordinances and any amendments that are needed to the plan itself, and we'll come back before you two groups separately at the time we're looking for adoption. Push the button, there we go. So, John, talk a little bit about the memos, we go through and develop a complete new TSP and go through adoption hearings, let's get on to the fun stuff, the money stuff. This is a graphic that shows you, in total, something in the order of about $200 million comes through the city, or will be generated by various means in the city, associated with transportation. Now, the thing to note on this graphic is, the right half of that circle is associated with system development charges, and those only happen when growth happens. Everything on the left side is really dedicated towards operation and maintenance, all the pavement utility fees, program monies, gas tax monies, and then there's a small slice of other monies. So for our purposes, we're mostly interested on the system development charge side of the coin, and the way that splits out in terms of the kind of growth the city's expecting is roughly like this, now these are rough numbers, I rounded them to 25% just because there's, and there's not a lot of precision in what we know about the ongoing work in the other concept plan area, we've got adopted plans for Park Place and Beaver Creek, we don't really have one for South End yet, because that just started. But the interesting thing about this graphic is that roughly half of the growth in the city is expected through infill of various sorts all over the city. So what that tells me is, if traction isn't gained on the concept plans, or if something really doesn't happen in a timely manner in the regional center areas, the SDC monies you can expect is about half of the number that we forecasted on the prior slide. But that's a reasonable thing to expect, I mean, the way this is set up is, the needs aren't going to be realized unless the growth fully comes, so it's a meter thing in that As you probably all know, the transportation STCs are not 100% fundable through the SDC program. A good chunk of those, where you have roadways that are not up to standards today, the piece, the money that goes toward making it up to standards is called an existing deficiency, and by regulation, you can't charge that as an SDC fee. Under your current list today, about 40 to 50% of the total cost is in that category. The same, of course, will be true in the future. So there is about another $10 to $14 million that came out of House Bill 2001, it's going to increase the gas tax piece that comes to the city, and we've accounted for that. Now, this is a slide I thought you all would appreciate. The funding gap, so you take all the projects that are in the list, something around $236 million worth, and what piece of that can be funded through STCs, and you've got about $100 million left, got a little bit bonus from that recent House bill, and then you've got a gap of about $90 million, if you wanted to realize all those projects. So what's that saying, what's that saying is, you have to be picking, you have to pick and choose which ones you think you can fund within the timeframe. Okay, so far, John, everybody's stepped on your toes over there.
Just real quick.
You're making jokes.
Just real quick, that, that $90 million is over 23 years, that's to 2035.
That's, that's the entire timeframe of the plan. Okay, correct.
So it's not like we need it tomorrow, it's?
No, no, not at all, not at all.
Day after tomorrow.
What it tells you is you have, you don't have the means available to fund all the projects that are in the TSP. You can fund roughly half, but the other half, you'd have to figure out some other way to do it. Let's see, so these are the, these are the tools in your toolbox, and frankly, some of these tools you probably don't want to take out of the toolbox. I think we had this conversation last time I came before the commission. You've got system development charge, normally when you do a TSP update, you go back through and refresh that, and you maybe you come up with a new rate. You obviously want to still be competitive with surrounding cities, and transportation STCs is only one component of the total SDC, and that's fair enough, but something to be relooked at. The split right now between motor vehicle funds and ped bike funds is as shown on the screen, you've got $156 million for motor vehicle and about $6 million for ped bike, and so certainly that could be rearranged a little bit. I know there's a lot of invested in the pavement maintenance utility fee, because I was part of that, and you kind of maybe don't want to mess with that, but there's no regulatory reason you couldn't. There's, from a state perspective, if you cared to, you could fund other things, transportation related with that fee. And local gas taxes can be popular, but really aren't that effective in my experience unless you live in Sandy, someplace like that where there's no, no gas for a long time. They make a fair amount of money every year through local gas taxes. So this is a quick refresh through the process we went through, we've got these eight goals. We looked at ways to measure each of those goals for all the different projects, and then we went through and scored all the projects based on that, and came up with a ranking system. I was here for a second, because there's a lot of words on the screen, in case you have any questions. I wasn't going to read through them. By the way, the last one complying with regulations, I didn't score it very well in general, but there's a lot of emphasis on health and safety, and a lot of emphasis on convenience and availability of feds and bikes in our review.
Well, I mean, this ranking came out, why don't you talk about how the, how they got put in this order?
Well, no, actually, John, I think this is the natural order, this is, this is the order that's presented in all the prior work to date.
Oh, okay.
There was discussion at the stakeholders meeting, you know, a month ago, that the goals really shouldn't all be equal from a scoring point of view, so we put out a survey to the committee and said, you tell me which ones are more important, and then that got joggled around a little bit, so that three, the numbers three, four, and two got pushed higher to the top, about being efficient, effective, health, the safety, those kinds of things, moved up a little bit, and so the projects that had strong scoring in that category moved up a little bit, but I can show you, well, it's the next slide, so before I get to that point, this is kind of the array that shows you in terms of the kinds of functions of the solutions we looked at. So you've got the eight goals on the left side, and we have a variety of different things in terms of kinds of projects, but we'll get to that in detail, so, in a minute. Scoring, this is an example of goal, what goal two, if you go through and scored it, you got, if it's doing good things for each of those subcategories, you get a positive value, if it's not doing anything, you give it a zero. If it's actually impacting it or making it worse, you get a negative value, and then we added them up across all the goals and come up with numerical values, and this is roughly the distribution of that across all the projects, so you can see, the scores anywhere from about the mid 60s all the way down to about 20, and we sliced off the top chunk of that and called those the ones that have most value in terms of the way the goals are presented. So this is the more interesting stuff, I think, this is the way it broke out, now we have these categories described like this in the memo that you have, a copy of, the majority of the projects and the monies continues to be in the driving, what we call the driving category, not the road category, and a significant number of projects end dollars for walking and biking, in total of about $20 million between the two. There's a couple, several new categories, we've got this family friendly category, which is a kind of a low, low impact, safe and comfortable route that families can ride through the community and is in a connected distance. You've got specific focus on getting people safely across the arterials like Mulalla, aside from where there are traffic signals, we're not really proposing a lot of any traffic signals, because those have their own regulations that come with those, but we're looking at ways to make that a safer, easier way to cross as well. So the way the money gets sorted out there is represented in the pie chart, if you added up biking and walking there, it's about almost 40% of the total, which is, it's a big number. Quite a bit different than the mix that's on the SDC list today. So the projects in the tech memo are organized, and it's basically a lot of maps and a lot of tables, and I can walk through the maps a bit if you care to. This is the way they're organized, they're broken out by ones that are focused on just intersections, then street extensions, and then upsizing streets and intersections, and then focus on just walking and biking and combinations of the two. So I can escape this, go to this, so this is the memo, and this is the bridge as it looked probably about six months ago. So you've got a series of, you've got two basic tables in this document, and I'm not, again, I'm not going to go through in great detail, but if you have interest in this, I would encourage you to take a deeper look at it. So two tables, the first table is financially constrained, these are the ones that have been pushed up to the top, table two is everything else. And formally, in the, in the plan, you know, we're not, we're not discarding any projects, all the projects are still there, it's just we've kind of ranked them a bit. So there's projects here identified, including traffic signals, transit system, signal priority, those kinds of things, and they're, they're tied to an index map for each case, so they're, these project numbers over here aren't necessarily, well, they are here in a nice order, but the priority, it isn't sorted by priority, it's sorted by number of the project. So in a few cases, you've got, you know, shorter term projects and the higher numbers. So if I go down to, I hope there's a map here, I'm going to be really disappointed if there's not.
You're going to be really disappointed.
I didn't see any, oh, yeah.
I think you will be.
I think there's maps down.
Okay. There's a map. It went black. Oh, there it is, well, that's figure two. So in this case, the regional center area, the color coding on these maps, projects that have red colors to the numbers are financially constrained, ones that have white numbers are others, and the circle, the color coding on that tells you what kind of project it is, and there's a legend on the side. I think I lost my mouse. So you can see, we've got signals, always stops roundabout, turns lanes, and those kinds of things, all identified here.
I'm going to ask a, one question I had up there. We've talked about the roundabout on Division and Mulalla 7th and so forth for some time. Does that get triggered by the potential implementation of the master plan of Willamette Falls Hospital? I mean, you've, you've mentioned our constraints, I'm just wondering what potential funding sources might come to be if certain developments come forward? This is one of them that comes to mind.
Well, yeah, I think that intersection, I know that's of high interest of the city, and certainly high interest of folks that have businesses in that area.
It's also got red on the number.
It also has red on the number, right, so are you asking it would be a candidate for an SDC project, is that what you're asking?
Well, or, I don't know whether it'd be a requirement with the implementation of a master plan in terms of the traffic impact of given development, I should, maybe the question more, more, more general, but oftentimes when we feel that a project's coming on, so it has a major impact, then we have a serious.
Well, the way I've seen it approached, I mean, our analysis looks at all growth in all places of the city, so these projects, by this analysis, can't necessarily be associated with any one project, unless there's a pocket of growth somewhere that is kind of obvious relationship like that. But the way I've seen that approach in the past, is you, applicant comes in for development, and they have to go through the SDC calculation process, the city can choose what they're going to do with that, they can have them build a project and use all that fee calculation to fund it, and maybe even a little bit more, and get reimbursed at a later point, I mean, those are all options the city staff has in terms of how this gets administered, but you're not going to have that determination as a part of the TSP, and Tony, I'm sure, has some ideas about that as well.
You know, what we've traditionally done with some of those larger master plans, if you're able to identify the improvements, you start then to get into assigning the proportionality of what their impact is to that intersection, and, you know, if it's, if it's $10, and their impact is 10%, they owe a dollar towards that. You know, it just depends on how many trips they're adding to it, so that's traditionally how we've done that, because there have been situations where you do have a deficient intersection, but we don't have the funds to go in and make that improvement, and they're not causing 100% of the level of service failure. So there are, there are ways that we address that through the master planning process.
One thing that we did hear from our Stakeholder Advisory Committee, I think it was actually Charles who brought it up, was the need for prioritization, prioritizing those projects along division that might impact the hospital sooner, so I think we were showing, I can't remember, this was medium term, and we thought maybe we need to look harder, you know, considering that a short-term project, so that, I don't know if that's happened yet, Carl, but that was one of the things that we left.
Not in this, this is the same version you saw a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, okay.
But those refinements are being done, we're looking at those kinds of things. So the maps didn't show up in your copy, is that what you said? That's a kind of a disappointing bummer.
They just weren't where I expected them to be, so, they'll be there.
Tucked in the back, yeah. So let's see, in this map, you're showing street extensions, and that kind of a thing, there really aren't as many as you might think, because frankly, the city's done a good job of building itself.
I guess the one I, interested, I think I see on there is Myers.
Uh-huh.
Is that, is that in any kind of prioritization level or not? I presume it's development that's going to trigger that, too.
On D-46, that's Myers, right? Can you read it?
Yes.
I think it's D-46.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's definitely prioritized, that's on the financially constrained list, but again, it wouldn't, you wouldn't have need for it unless something happened there, right? And this group is, this is where you're upsizing streets, or upsizing intersections or both.
I guess the question, the reason I mention that one specifically is oftentimes, we talk about shovel-ready projects, and oftentimes the question is, is the infrastructure available? And we've got a big area there where the infrastructure is, is not available, and it's one of the, does development occur without the intersection if you think it's a priority development area, or, or how does it, how does it move?
That's a Tony question.
Yeah, I think what you'd see for, for the Myers Road extension, unless the city went in and made that a project that they wanted to go in, you know, get the property, build the project, what you're going to see is, is what we can, what we historically see is that as those properties redevelop, those street improvements would be made associated with that development. So the way we currently do projects right now is, you know, unless we identify a project to go in and do, it'll, it'll stay on our TSP and will be implemented through the land use process as development occurs. Does that answer your question, or?
All right, so the walking solutions, a variety of sidewalks, street extensions, that kind of thing, also the family friendly route, which really hasn't been defined exactly what that is, it can be a combination of things, but it's mostly about making those, these kind of bright line colored routes more of a natural place for people to walk or ride their bikes, and it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to be building sidewalks, I mean, most of these were handpicked because they're slower, low-volume streets, and so we're not assuming that you're going to go in and retrofit these streets, because the cost would be extraordinary, but there's measures you can take in terms of signing and routing, there's, is some other steps you can take in terms of something closer to traffic calming, but it's not a mandatory piece, it's something the city will work out as they go along.
I've noticed that there's a lot of projects to complete the sidewalk gaps. Does that just take place with development, or how do you obtain the land to do that? How does that process work?
Well, yeah, often, well, certainly as development occurs, we're on fronting pieces of the street where the sidewalk is missing, that's a condition of their approval, I'm sure, to get this, that piece of street up to, up to standard, you can include those kinds of improvements, fund them through other ways, I mean, unfortunately, that doesn't fall into SDC category, because that's a, that's a deficiency, and so you have to pay for it through other means. As far as getting the property, that's something we haven't looked at at the TSP level, what the right of way is there in terms of can, can you reasonably get a sidewalk within the right of way, is that your question, Commissioner?
Well, it's, it's on the list, so it must be obviously on the radar to do that.
Right, the expectation is the sidewalk could be built there.
Okay.
Commissioner, maybe I can, this, going through this TSP process has been of a learning curve for, for me as well, and what I've kind of come to learn is that having a TSP and a plan strengthens the agency in that if there is development along a particular corridor, we have some, an adopted document that says, when you redevelop, you shall do this, right? Without that, we, our hands are a little bit tied on what we can require of the developers, so a lot of what we see here with our existing funding sources won't, isn't likely to be built unless something changes on that end of things. There's definitely, the prioritization helps, for instance, the roundabout at Mulalla and Division Street is likely, likely to happen, but it's going to be an assemblage of projects, kind of like what we've done with other, our other corridors, you know, Mulalla, 7th, all those corridors, there's been some component of STCs, there's been some component of utilities, there's been some component of, of gas taxes, and now with our PMA, there may be some PMA dollars that can go into that, so, and grants, grants, David just reminded me that.
This updated TSP is real important for that.
Exactly, having the, the TSP and, and a plan will help us hopefully obtain grant funding for some of these projects. So the, to me, the important thing is that we're, or what I've come to learn, is that we're, by listing these projects, it just makes the city's position so much stronger, whether it be for development, grant applications, or just project development, so that when we bring to you a capital improvement project, and, you know, hopefully we have the funding for it, it's, it's justifiable. If we don't have the funding for it, we may want to ask you for more funding to cover the cost of that project, and we haven't done a lot of that, but I think that's kind of what it does.
And it also makes the projects available for, suddenly available shovel-ready money from the feds, you can say, we're going to do 1.6 miles of sidewalks because you just, you know, gave us a billion dollars, so, I mean, that's how some of the stuff just got built the last few years, so, because we were ready and we had a plan in place, so.
Right, all right, thank you.
Are you taking us up in this?
Yeah, I'm not even looking at it, so I should. I'm looking at the map just a moment. So, yeah, yeah, well, let's get the paper from the commission first, but we have Leon, is he?
Leon, too.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to get our, our questions, I think, up here first, but we'll be sure to get you, Betty.
I believe you presented this when the mayor and Commissioner Smith was out of town, it was the three other female commissioners.
The three other females?
So, yes. And my question then, and my question now is, in this is a statement that you're going to cause congestion in certain areas, and at that time, I asked for information on what intersections that was going to be done, I haven't seen that yet.
What intersections are going to be affected?
Affected.
Well.
It's on the map, I guess.
It was not on the map at the time, the ones that are going to be on purpose congestion to get.
Oh, that question, well, that's a bit different than this, I mean, the question, the topic we were discussing was, the city has a standard in, in terms of how congested they'll allow streets and intersections to get, and it's a different number than the region has. And the question I posed at that point is, do you want to bring your bar up to match the reason, or do you want to leave it where it's at? And her, astute question to me was, okay, well, what difference does it make, are there any, how big a difference would it make, which intersections don't work well, which ones do? What we've found since that time, because we had, at that point, we hadn't really done a lot of future analysis yet, the intersections that really fail dramatically are state intersections, they're not city intersections, so there was only a handful of city intersections that reached that peak level, and there's, there's a couple located, they're all, they're all pretty much down here in the downtown area.
Right.
here in the downtown area for the most part.
Right, because I'm not in favor of causing people to sit in traffic longer if we didn't need to let them do that.
Fair enough. I mean, for example, I think it's Main and, and at 14th was one that I couldn't, we can't still figure out exactly how to solve that one because it's only a block away from the highway and you can't, you're, you're limited on your options there. But other than that, I mean, even the intersection of 213 and Beaver Creek is numerically very close to the region's standard, so we didn't propose expanding that intersection anymore. We did talk about lengthening turn pockets.
Right.
Especially the one-leg with, that has the nice lovely landscape island. The island may get shorter and the turn pocket get longer, but we're not talking about expanding it to make it larger. So my answer to you is, as far as the city facilities go, it's very limited in terms of which ones are going to go above your current threshold.
And then my other comment that I made that evening, I'll make it again, is the pavement maintenance fee was, I was part of that when we put that into work and that was put forth for driving cars, but it didn't have a bike ped component. I would be very hard-pressed to use that money for bike ped because then our citizens will come and say, that's not what you told us. So I'll just put that comment out there, too.
Commissioner?
My question was, when you were looking at your income, your revenue estimates.
Yes.
Did you take into account any of the changes that have been proposed as far as taxing environmentally superior vehicles and the changes that they're talking about down in Salem for those?
VMT gas tax?
Yeah.
No, no. What we've assumed is that today it will continue. We have not supposed that those kind of taxation regulations will change.
Okay.
So, I mean, the theory being, if they do what they're going to do, I think net will be, you'll get more taxes. I think that's the idea because fuel-efficient cars and the fact that Oregonians drive less than pretty much any other state per capita, it's about 20% less on average, which is kind of an interesting little factoid. So, no, our, our assumption is that the current system will stay in place and continue as is.
I've got a question, but I think I'll, since I didn't see anybody else pop up, I'll think, Leon, you want to come forward and pose a question? Come on. Please use the microphone, too. Is it Lysol?
Hi, it's Legal.
One more time?
Legal.
Well, Legal. Do we have it misspelled?
Yes, I'm Leon Legal and I reside at 710 Cedar Lane. That's up in the Barkley Hills Neighborhood Association. And interestingly enough, even though I'm a member of the Land Use Committee and we were in this room last night and did a presentation for the land use folks, and for some reason, we're not plugged into this whole TSP process. And so it was suggested by Planning Commissioner, Mr. Maybe there, that we attend tonight. And since last night, I guess my primary concern here is, one of the recommendations for Table Two, page 28 of the report, was that the Malala Avenue Barkley Hills Drive intersection, there's a pedestrian crossing there, which is extremely, extremely dangerous for many, many, many reasons. And why it got a low priority for funding or actually, you know, changing the situation there, I don't understand that. And so I just mentioned that and would like to know, I guess, how it was ranked and perhaps how we came to that conclusion in the report.
Which intersection again is it, please?
It's actually a pedestrian crossing that is between Mountain View and Holmes Lane, right in front of the grocery outlet going from that side over to the Barkley Hill side. The problem there, real quickly, is that it's kind of at the top of the hill and people coming up Malala, going towards Holmes, they physically can't see what's there. It's also half a block away from a bus stop, a city bus stop, a school bus stop. And depending upon what's going on, basically, there's just visual impairment for people to see who's trying to cross. Secondly, our committee has a concern about the actual intersection there of Mountain View and Malala Ave, which seems to be nowhere addressed in the report that we could find. Basically, that intersection and Commissioner Mum lives back on Mountain View and is familiar with it on a daily basis, but there are times when you physically can't get out of that intersection for three to five minutes if you're lucky. It constitutes at least two problems. One, if it's during the morning and evening rush hour traffic particularly, any emergency vehicle trying to get in there for a fire or, or somebody having a medical problem would have to physically get out and direct people and cars to move because they can't get in because of the line of cars. Also, at certain times of the day, the two businesses at that corner there, a flooring business and a Chevron gas station, have delivery trucks that either partially or totally block certain areas of Mountain View where once again you can't get in and that constitutes a problem medically as well as safety-wise for, for people. So I guess the, the Land Use Committee for the Barkley Hills Neighborhood Association wonders, I guess, why somehow that wasn't addressed. And if we're a bit negligent because as an association we didn't get it in there, then I apologize and, but want to on the record now to make sure that people are aware that that is a major concern for people who live up on the hill there.
Just a couple of comments on that. We've been working, and Leon, did you say you're in the Neighborhood Association, Barkley Hills? You're actually on the board? Because we've actually met with them and provided them a fair amount of engineering study on, on that particular intersection, both those intersections.
Well, my understanding, although I was not at the meeting, but based upon the, the report that was given to other people, not myself, basically what was addressed was basically kind of the Barkley Hills side of the street over there. And really, not much attention was given to Mountain View as a specific area that needs to be corrected, either through, through putting, you know, different turn arrows or limitations on coming in or going out or whatever.
So that, on the Barkley Hill side, the city met, has met with the Neighborhood Association. We're actually, there's a curb extension on Barkley Hills and the concern was only one vehicle could turn in or could turn out of that intersection. And so we spent a fair amount of time with the Neighborhood Association and agreed to add, there's a, there's like a three to four-foot curb extension right there at the veterinarian's office. And so as part of this year's projects, paving projects, we've, we agreed to remove that curb extension so that it provides enough passage for two vehicles to either turn left or turn right out of Barkley Hills Drive. We also were in some disagreement about the concern for the, the way the pedestrian crossing is placed there. We think it's the safest crossing that can be produced for that location, short of, you know, some kind of a ped, ped-activated crossing button that, you know, that might be an additional alternative to how we might deal with the ped crossing there.
Wasn't there also talk about taking those two trees down, too?
There was some talk about that. We're-
For visibility?
We're, I mean, staff have looked at this in detail and feel like those trees provide some protection as well. There's plenty of visibility with those trees and we've limbed them up and kind of made sure that there's no low-hanging limbs. But in reality, those trees provide some protection as well. And so we've decided not to remove those trees.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Oh, I, I was waiting for them to go, but.
So the other, and the other little piece is on Mountain View. As you know, it's a type, we redid that when we redid the reservoir, when we did the reservoir upgrades and pump stations, pump station there. It's definitely constrained by the Chevron dealership and the other business across the street, the carpet business. So there's not really much of anything. We can try to patrol the, the loading and unloading of vehicles right, right there on Mountain View, but short of that, there's no room. There's just no, you know, we've, we've utilized all the, the right-of-way that we have to use there for the sidewalks and the travel lanes.
And they will block that and they will, they've told me before, I'm not moving.
You mean the, the delivery vehicles?
Yeah, yeah. They're very onr中的.
If, my understanding is you're not supposed to block any intersections.
Right.
And I'm wondering if where we have these problems where they continuously get blocked, I think major crossings, that doesn't happen as much. But people, I noticed a lot of people stopping and not blocking intersections, but I think on those smaller streets that happens. If we could identify some, could we put up a sign, do not block intersection?
Well, that's an option we could look at, yeah. Yeah.
John, one of, one of the things, I was at the work session last night and Leon had raised a suggestion that there might be a way to modify the striping or somehow control the left-hand turn lane in the median to allow better access from Mountain View onto Malala Avenue and restrict people from getting into that turn lane, into the Barkley Hills turn lane too soon, as a way to just give them a better opportunity to get out of that street.
The spacing, and we, we have a detailed engineering study on this that I'd be happy to share. It's been before the Transportation Advisory Committee as well. The spacing between Mountain View and the, the turn onto Barkley, so spacing between Barkley Hills and Mountain View is, if I remember correctly, it's about 70 feet. It's really not much at all. So, and we're trying to provide somewhat of a pocket onto Barkley Hills and a somewhat of a po, po, turning pocket onto Mountain View. If there were, you know, we've talked about, you know, does it make sense to try and further constrain Chevron? Because that's another little, you know, conflict point is people are trying to, you know, get beyond Barkley Hills, coming down the hill and turning left into Chevron. And, you know, that, that would prohibit their business access as well. I would tell you that we've looked at this really hard. I mean, we have really looked at this hard. We've spent, and it hasn't been DKS that's been looking at this. We've used Kittleson and Associates, another, it's a competitor of, of DKS, but also very competent engineers to look at options and make recommendations for us. And they've, they've done that in great detail and I'd be happy to share that with the, with this committee as well. Because I, we've, we've heard these, I think there is potential for better patrolling the, you know, the, the no parking zone that would, you know, to keep, keep the, I think it's really the carpet company that has deliveries there. They're, they've got a door that, it's, there's just, there's, they don't have any onsite really availability for deliveries. So it's kind of a balancing act that we, we play with those kind of businesses, but we could definitely enforce that a little harder. And we own a gated piece of property next door. I don't know if we could help, help by, you know, sharing some access there or not, but it's, it, so that's the best I can offer for that.
Well, thank you, Leon, for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the, on the walkways and so, I think it's been less than 20 years since we required developers to put in sidewalks on any developments. And you do see a lot of, a lot of our arterials without, you know, areas where there are no sidewalks and so on. It seems like you were giving some attention to that on, on Lynn and Myers and so forth, if I was reading your map correctly. I got a little lost in it, but I always get lost on those streets. Anyway, but a lot of that, there are not much in the way of infill opportunities at all and so forth. So is, is there a source of revenue that we could actually direct more to those areas when in fact we have arterials that are impacted by the lack, lack of sidewalks?
Well, we're seeing some signs of that with Vulcan Boulevard, so I think there are opportunities for that. There's, it's not part of the funding mechanism that we're showing here. And I think to Betty, to address your question, the pavement maintenance utility funding is really kind of curb-to-curb. I would say if there's a bike lane, existing bike lane that's in there, it may get included in some of that pavement maintenance and striping, but it, but you're right, we're not building new, new bike lanes with that or new pedways with that or sidewalks for that matter. Sometimes we eke in a ADA ramp improvement because we're mandated to do that. But, but I think those future sidewalk connections, you know, it's, there's, that's a discussion yet to be had about how we best fund those.
Yep.
Well, I, I can add that a portion of those types of connections that are not near growth, there is a slice, I think I said $14 million, that buys you some sidewalks. And I, so I know some of that is getting funded that way. But then again, that's, you know, that's money that you could all, obviously, I mean, that's coming through, that's basically gas tax money you haven't realized yet. So normally where that goes is for maintenance. So there would have to be a deliberate option for the city to re-task that somewhere else. In this case, we've made that assumption that that was, that that would be for.
Do we have another speaker? Kelly?
No.
Okay.
We're over time, so.
Before, we're over time, but I failed to do something. I'd like all the members of our joint commissions to introduce each other. I'm not sure all our planning, of our, all our city commission members know everybody on the planning commission. So, Charles, if you'd start, we'll just work around and-
Charles Kidwell, I'm the chair of the Planning Commission.
Go ahead, introduce yourself, too.
Carol Polly, Commissioner. Betty Mum, Commissioner.
Doug Gilly, Mayor.
Kathy Roth, Commissioner.
Mahoney, Planning Commission.
Damon Maybe, Planning Commission.
Zach Kinkin, Plan Commission.
Want to thank you all for taking your time and joining us here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there still an opportunity for people to put in public comment? That's what-
I think they'll be commenting up until that meeting there in January and February.
So the site's still open and they can do that?
It is definitely still open. We're encouraged to add comments.
You know, one, one other thing that I, I think may have gotten glossed over, there's a great website for the TSP that's connected to the city's website. And it was designed to be interactive. So people that have a concern about a particular transportation issue can log into that website and pick out that particular location and make comments. So if you have a concern about a particular intersection being a dangerous place or there's no sidewalk, you can actually log in and make a comment there. And then other people can follow up that comment and agree with you or disagree on that website. So I would encourage people, if you have concerns, it's not too late to, to get on there and make comments.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Is your renewal commission exact?